We'll go ahead, Paul, this will be the order again. Uh, people with a moment of time to pray and meditate. Just enjoy a moment of time for yourselves, so please join me in the event. Thank you. If you'll please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move on to public comment. We have one person signed up, Mr. Dennis Justice. And if you will, before you begin, just write your name and your address for the record and three minutes, and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Justice. Uh, I live in 131 Tandy's Lane, Montford Street Road. Um, I saw in Times News, um, something about pickleball courts being considered. And I just happened to check very gently because I deliberately kept myself out of the loop here. If you could start the clock, please. Um, I'd go over trust me, if, uh, if you got wise. Um, um, so I happened to check very gently here and saw there's something on the agenda about basketball courts and tennis courts here. Um, and so I, I came here completely ignorant of what the proposal would be. It would be at Billmore's Park. Um, I would be greatly in favor of a basketball court here. I take my son, um, once, twice, three times a week to the activity center on South Grove Street so he can shoot hoops. And as some of you know, I've been involved, I was involved with the pickleball community. I started a group called Blue Ridge Pickleball, um, to try to advocate for building more pickleball courts. Pickleball is one of the hottest growing sports in America. It's also, um, the hottest growing sport among active seniors. Um, because of a change in jobs, I couldn't play pickleball anymore. So I would hope that if you'll tennis courts, you would look into putting pickleball courts. Unfortunately, sometimes there can be problems between pickleball and tennis courts. If somebody keeps advised, you can put in temporary court minors and such. Um, if you know me, you don't want to bring this up. We have a thirty-three percent adult obesity rate in this state. And if you leave high school, the numbers show you have a ninety-nine, if you're, if you leave high school obese, there's a ninety-nine percent chance you'll be obese your whole life. So anything that we can do to improve infrastructure, I will support. I would hope that whatever plan turns out to be, if you look into a shed cover over those courts where they're now, or at least put an infrastructure now where you can do it later. There's a pickleball complex in Griffin, Georgia, South Atlanta, that has eighteen courts. Or there's a shed. Having that shed cover dramatically improves your ability to bring, um, people to various activities. Um, there is a shedded basketball courts. Just also have that in Hendersonville, which greatly increases your chance to gain activity, especially in the summer when, you know, in case your range is still play. Um, but I just want to remind you about fifteen years ago, we acquired property around ninety-three acres of land. I don't know if you still own it or not. Now, I know you've been able to build around four acres of it, but we need a recreation center. Um, I've been arguing for this for a long time. I should not have to drive all the way to Hendersonville to have my son or myself have, um, the state public recreation. That facility is not air-conditioned. That's going to change next year, but for right now, it's too hot for me to be in it. Um, and also going out to the Gray New Zion Church, which is the point of place for Brixton, is simply too small, it always was. And we could build even a modest facility there down the road. That could be a good point of place to move for taxpayers of Brixton. We seem to subsidize a lot of projects as what your taxpayers end up not here. And I hope, I don't care if the county runs it or the town runs it, we need a recreation center next year.
Thank you for coming. Is anybody else that wishes to speak there above the comment? We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Uh, council, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
I'd like to make a correction on the minutes. Probably insert, I believe it was for seven eleven insertion on, uh, having running major comments. When we asked, uh, when I asked Chief Gary to come up and address, we see if he wanted to address, um, Ms. Kemp's concerns. If Chris could be so kind to just get some sort of notification that he could address several questions she had. I would appreciate that.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes with Councilwoman Chief Franklin's additions. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, do we have a second, to approve the minutes? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those are back to say aye.
Aye.
Those are both, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is updates for council. Any updates? Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. Are any questions, comments concerning the addition of consent agenda? I'll be asking questions last week.
Yeah, I mean, I want to interrupt that there are some to start. I know it's consent and you probably should have pulled this for some discussion, but if, if you're comfortable with it, then you can come back and approve. But, um, one of them is, um, the second consent approval, the lease of the bond for, um, King Creek Vistas LLC. This is, um, the infrastructure improvements and Sycamore Cottage. I spoke to you last week about, it was kind of up to the wire and the last thing to be completed. And Eric Root for our planning group, he was able to confirm that they finished the sidewalks in there. He's gone and checked it himself. Um, I emailed you all, but just in case you didn't get to see the email on it, I just thought I should share that because I know, uh, Councilman Davey last week had brought something up about that, so.
Wasn't there also some trees that were still waiting to be planted? Is that what you're, um, those were done?
Just the last couple in the sidewalk.
Good, thank you.
And then the other thing, just real quick, uh, so on the, I know you're just setting a public hearing for the revisions, Article six about the stormwater ordinance. But I also emailed you that we have some from McGill Associates and also our planning zoning director, Eric here, uh, to cover some of the questions. There'd be having the remaining questions before we set this. So Chris Brown with McGill Associates has been working closely with Eric Group, and she's here in the audience, so if you, um, if you want to bring up the questions or, uh, I chaired, I recorded the copy of the state model ordinance. You've got that via email. Um, but, and I know Trevor, you had some questions.
Any other questions that you could see?
Sure.
It's just a few questions. Uh, it was talking to us, it was, this, um, stormwater amendment is basically based off of the state ordinance and your emails, they said it's not really off the state ordinance, it's just off of, uh, MS four storm management plan, which?
Correct. You have, um, the town legislature has received their, um, stormwater, MS four stormwater permit, which they're required to, to have. And, um, it was just removed and became effective last January of twenty twenty-two. And, um, and that's a permit to discharge stormwater under the NPDS, the National Plute Discharge Management System. So it, it comes down from the EPA to the state and then to MS four towns, which, um, the town legislature is considered an MS four. And, um, part of that permit process to renew their permit, the state has, has gotten on board to, what they're trying to do is getting, get more consistency across the towns, the cities and towns who fall under this. And so they have, have a easier, uh, way to make sure the towns are abiding by their permit. And, um, one of the things that the legislature was required to do was, um, update their stormwater management plan. And that stormwater management plan is, um, was a template from the state. And basically everything in that template are requirements that under your permit that you are required to abide by. So one of the things, the permits for five years, one of the things in the first year that the town is required to do is to revisit their ordinance and to make sure that they got that authority to, um, implement their stormwater management. So that's one of the things, um, I helped them to do when we went through the ordinance, just to make sure that anything in the stormwater management plan that had not been addressed before is now addressed. And it does, there aren't a whole lot of changes. It's mainly some, some verbiage. The state has made a few changes. And one of the main things is the low density requirement for projects that are low density. It used to be you didn't have to get a low density permit. But now you do. Henderson County is the permitting authority for, uh, Fletcher. They look at all the projects. And so that was one of the things that needs to be added.
My experience, sorry, then, of, of, before you went over, could you describe what, what's considered low density?
Yes. Um, projects, typically it's projects who are, um, that are, have under twenty-four percent impervious area in their project, like a, a commercial site. If they're, if they're putting in impervious area in your rooftops, your sidewalk, your roads, um, if you're over twenty-four percent for your parcel, then you're considered high density. And, um, that's one of, one of the things you guys were already doing, um, high density permit. You had to have a stormwater control facility for your, um, project. So, um, with low density, it used to be you, you didn't have to have a permit, but now they're requiring it to be a permit, but you don't have to have a, uh, stormwater control measure that they want you to design in a low density way, which is, um, to have, um, less curb and gutter, uh, less impervious area overall. Capture your stormwater instead of capturing it and catch basins to have it flow naturally off, off your side. And keep your site, your runoff control, whatever the, your, um, pre-development is, keep your control to, um, your site will be below, um, below or the same as the pre-development. So your runoff numbers are the same.
So the high density and low density, really the big difference is the amount of impervious?
Correct.
Not, not the size of the development?
No, it can have a pretty large, you have a large, huge development that's low density. It's just, um, the amount of impervious area per parcel that you're adding to it. And like I said, they used to, you still have to get erosion control permits and such, but for as far as stormwater is concerned, you didn't have to actually get a permit, which you now do. And so that was, that's the major change in your ordinance is to, to address the low density.
Is there any minimum size development that doesn't have to go through this process?
Uh, yes, if, uh, if you're under an acre.
Good, thank you.
So with these requirements, it will, it will match up with the Henderson County? Is the permission clause active still?
Correct. Henderson County and the state, you know, Henderson County is now has to meet those requirements too. They have to look at low density projects, keep track of them. Um, that's the biggest thing, your, your tracking those low density projects. You're looking at them once in a five-year period, just, just to make sure that, um, things are working properly and they're not having, um, runoff issues, uh, stormwater issues. Um, and really that, and the other things in your ordinance that, um, have been marked or marked are mainly just some, some verbiage to make sure we're in compliance with that stormwater management plan. And it's, and it follows your stormwater plan a little better than used to.
Is there anything in this plan right here that goes above the state permission? Don't know that all of that is what they actually require.
Right. Because the stormwater management, we were given a template and you basically are required to follow certain, you have to, you have to meet certain minimum measures. And, um, Fletcher, they're, they've kept within that realm, you know, like, below or above the beyond or anything like that.
I'm just curious, does that mean less rotation ponds?
No, it's the same as it's been, yeah, not necessarily. It's just that now we're responsible, now it's more quick, you're, you're more responsible for checking, uh, those, uh, projects that didn't have requirements before. You, you're just, um, that's another one of the stormwater management plan, best management practices, is what they call the B P's. And you have to, um, check on, on things. But the twenty-four percent, the high density, low density, that's been around a long time. So really the projects, or amount of projects that are, are coming in that are high density, it's not going to, it doesn't really change that, how many ponds you're going to have in your, in your town. It'd be the same as it probably was five years ago. It's just new projects now have to, that are low density now have to be, um, reviewed and looked at.
So now that we talk about how it affects developments, how does it affect like average homeowner or someone that's building a couple homes on an acre or something? So it really won't have much effect on?
No, it'd be the same rules that we had before.
Unless you go over an acre.
If you go over an acre.
Then you'll have to get a new permit.
Yeah, single family, if you're, if you're disturbing over an acre and you, um, are adding, uh, more than twenty-four percent impervious, it could affect your, your property. But that, it follows the erosion control permit, which is, that's, that's the guideline. If it's over, if you're disturbing over an acre, um, then you are required to get an erosion control permit and that also has to follow under the stormwater rules.
Which Henderson County is already implementing that, correct? So you couldn't get it done without their permits anyways?
Right. And that was one of the other things that we have to do with this new stormwater management plan was to work with Henderson, Henderson County. And, um, we had to make a few changes to the resolutions, um, because they're doing all your permitting for, for, um, low density projects for erosion control and stormwater. And we required a few little, uh, tweaks as well, especially with the density language we had to add.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, did this mostly talks about, uh, the building phase of projects? Who has it been monitors these things after they're already in place?
Well, that's, that's part of, um, town culture stormwater management plan as well. After, after these projects are built, they get their, their permit through Henderson County. Um, but for permanent stormwater measures, it's up to, it's the town's responsibility to go out and, and look at those. And the way they worded it is you, um, have to put eyes on it, go out and inspect it, um, once in the five-year period for everyone. So that, that's part of one of their B P's as well, is inventory, doing inventory of all your, uh, stormwater management facilities in the town limits and E T J. And then, um, we, we made a schedule, started a schedule already of, you know, we're going to do five or however many there's a year and, and, um, we go out and take a, take a look at and contact the owner if there's an issue, if there's an erosion problem or the facility's not working as proposed, as it was built to work.
So let me ask you, or maybe Eric, do, do we have the expertise in-house to do these kind of inspections?
We do not currently, but that's one of the things that has been coming to you the last few years of tracking on the budget cycle for this new permit cycle that we're in now, is that we're, you know, working with, we go way more closely to.
No, you're right.
And that's some of the duties that have been folded in. And so that's where the budget could be tweaked from year to year as we get the true nature of the costs and all.
Now, obviously, we are going to be paying, you deal with the partners to help us out here. Is there any fee to the landowner for these annual inspections or anything?
Not currently.
Seems like something I don't want to hear about.
That, that leads into.
We're doing inspection every five years.
That leads into the question, and this could be a couple of years from now, two years, three years, do we create like some communities have, like a stormwater utility fee to help manage that cost?
And that's what some of the lot of towns, you know, they'll, you know, have their implemented stormwater fees with their regular water sewer though.
Thank you.
Could I ask one question too? As it relates to setting a public hearing for next month, I want to make sure that we may get use of Chris's time tonight. So, um, I don't plan it out for about next month unless you anticipate questions during the hearing next month. But I just want to mention that, so I can coordinate with Chris if necessary.
Well, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, um, I'm sure you could probably understand that we would rather have it consistent. The last thing that I know I would want to do was overburden or have regulations that aren't necessary. Um, but I know how important it is to have proper drainage and stormwater control as well. But I think that's a general concern.
And one of, one of the things I should mention too is, uh, as part of your permit for, um, that Henderson County will be doing is they require the owners of stormwater management facilities like ponds and such, they are required want to, um, send, um, a certification that their, um, facility has been inspected and, um, is certified by, by an engineer or somebody that's certified to look upon, look at these, um, facilities. So they have to have that in hand once every, uh, once a year. So, so there's some oversight there to make it a little easier for, uh, Fletcher to, you know, do their reports too, but, um, it's like once in five years. But the owners are, are expected to.
And that's on their own.
Yeah. That's, that component of it is that it's supposed to be tracked by Henderson County.
And it's tracked, yeah.
That sounds sufficient.
Yeah. It's just part of, part of your own permit, this Fletcher has to also, they have to guys, um, each one every five years.
So it's not, it sounds like the, the Fletcher part of the inspection is kind of double-checked to make sure they're doing what they say to do.
Right. Because it's in your town and it's probably yours stormwater management.
Any other final questions, comments, concerns? We thank you. You got something?
Yeah.
Uh, that's my question. Yeah. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So who?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented during discussion. Seeing none, all those are back to say aye.
Aye.
Those are both, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Mr. Daniel Carey from Physical Legal Services. Mr. Carey, back to me, I'm Gloria.
Thank you, Mayor Blakely. I appreciate your invitation to be here some time ago, but I've worked out this summer. Um, and I just want to mention, um, I was here as part of a vision in Henderson County in twenty twenty-two class, not long ago. Mark, host of us, appreciated that day. And then just prepared for this evening, Christine was a great help. So, thank you very much. I'll be, um, mercifully brief and to the point. But we thought it was important for our organization, Physical Legal Services, to remind the people of Fletcher, um, what services are available, um, through our organization. And the simplest way of looking at it is, uh, for low-income people in Western North Carolina who need, who need civil legal assistance, Physical Legal Services is the place to go. Um, you know, the Constitution guarantees, uh, an attorney, criminal defense, whatever, if you're accused of a crime, uh, but not so if you're involved in some sort of civil matter. So we try to fill that gap and provide an, an array of, uh, legal services to low-income folks, again, throughout Western North Carolina. But of course, we're really focused on Henderson County and Fletcher this evening. Um, got a few slides and I'll just run through about a dozen slides and I'll have time for questions and answers. Um, our mission is straightforward and just as I said, we're, we're trying to meet some basic needs of the people of Western North Carolina. Also improve their lives and give them an opportunity to get out of whatever station they are in. And so many face, um, legal, um, snares, um, that they may be gotten themselves into or maybe they're just subjected to those things. But they should have, um, good legal counsel. In the end, it really saves a lot of time and energy down the road. So we put our, our resources, you know, at work for those people to try to get them a, a fair day in court if necessary. Uh, but that's really as the last resort, we're really trying to resolve things before we get to that point. And our attorneys, I think, are, are very good at doing that. So as I mentioned, we're active in really all eighteen counties in Western North Carolina. And we do have a regional office in Hendersonville. Of course, the headquarters is in Asheville. But you can see from the map that we're really trying to be as many places as possible and be as accessible as possible. And our priority areas are safety, housing, health and income safety, which is largely put under domestic violence and interpersonal violence that occurs, you know, in families, between married couples in many cases. And, uh, we really try to, you know, get in and resolve those issues, um, as quickly as possible. Housing, lots of abictions, um, folks trying to hang on to good decent housing, which we know is a priority today. Um, and we want, uh, again, facilitate that and help both landlords and tenants, you know, have peaceable sort of resolutions to whatever issue is out there. Health is a major push right now. We're trying to help people get access to healthcare. Um, so many people in North Carolina, in Western North Carolina, don't have health insurance. And we have an ombudsman dedicated to help people access health insurance. And that remains a priority for us. And then income, as I mentioned earlier, is really just providing an opportunity. We, we do a lot of work helping people file taxes that may have never filed taxes before. Uh, and they either don't make enough money, they think, I'm not on the radar, I don't need to do this, I don't owe anything. They may be leaving a lot of money on the table that's due them in terms of tax credits, earned income tax credit, perhaps a child tax credit. And when they get those earned refunds, that's a game changer for them. And I'll talk more about that in a second. Again, who, who we're helping, um, just the most vulnerable people of Western North Carolina and who are at or below one hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty line, which you can see is a pretty low bar if you have a family of three and that's what your earning is. Um, and that's a tough way to go. So, um, you know, we really try to help with that. And then as I said, uh, so much of what we do is with domestic violence and, um, about three quarters of our clients are, are females. And here is an array of programs, and fear not, I will not go through each and every one of these, but the important thing is, I think, to appreciate the array of things, everything from children's law, consumer law, elder law, veteran's law. We have attorneys dedicated to doing expunctions, cleaning up old records, helping people get driver's licenses so they can get two jobs and pursue employment that way. Um, and, and then as I said, the access to medical care, um, and, um, and healthcare and, um, our, our tax program that we're really putting on. And then as I said, the access to medical care and healthcare and our tax program that we're really putting a lot of emphasis on. And again, how we do this, direct service, that can be just one-to-one consultation with an attorney. We have intake folks that help vet those things. Community collaboration, we have a lot of other great community partners in the area, other nonprofits that do similar work, but not the legal work that we do. But we might collaborate, for example, with Safeway or with Interfaith Assistance Ministry or Council on Aging. We're going to try to leverage whatever we can to bring our sort of strong suit to the table. And then policy advocacy, our attorneys are actually very active in helping municipalities and counties draft ordinances, drafting arrays and policies with respect to, say, for example, housing. Our attorneys have been actively involved in that and I think are helpful. And finally, community economic development, which is again, just helping people get access to what is out there and available to them that they may not know about. We certainly helped a lot of people, these are 2021 numbers, more than 20,000 people we helped last year throughout Western North Carolina. And in these variety of ways that are broken down, I should say. So housing needs, children, again, domestic violence victims, and then a lot of volunteers. So I want to sort of dispel the notion that we're just a lethal farm, a law farm, we're much more than that. And we use quite a few volunteers. We have about 30-plus attorneys on staff, but we use about 300-plus pro bono attorneys throughout the region. So we're leveraging everything we can to help people. Again, just one line of this matters is because so many low-income people face these legal situations and they don't know where to turn. And again, we're there really primarily to represent and stand with them and really try to resolve it before it has to go to court. That's the thing, the most important thing. But if it should go that far, they should have representation. These are our benefits. We run on about an $8 million annual budget, but we're leveraging over $20 million in assistance in the community that we serve. So nearly a three-in-one leverage in there, just pretty good. Then as I mentioned, all the volunteers that we use, great thing for them. And, you know, that's a less threatening way for people to come in and just feel like, I don't know an attorney, I don't know how to talk to an attorney. We have folks that have helped kind of smooth that path for them. As I've said, we're about an $8 million annual budget. I think the takeaway here is that about two-thirds of our funding comes from private sources. And about a third comes from public sources and grants and counties, municipalities and so on. Now, one of the things I wanted to just underscore is a new program called, what we call HEOP, Health Education, Health and Economic Opportunity Program. And this is to help the folks get access to healthcare and helping folks with their taxes. And just in 2022 alone, we've already helped secure more than $500,000 in tax refunds. And we've helped 120 people enroll in or have their renewal enrollment in health insurance. This is, you know, significant, helping folks. And so we, you know, I'm not here to ask for money as much as I'm here to ask, you ought to be aware of what we do so you can steer people in our direction. Because we want to get these folks taken care of and it really is our job to do that. So, you know, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. I'm finished. If there are questions, I'm happy to field them. I think we all have packets of just basic information that I shared beforehand. But more than anything, we just want to be good partners with the town of Fletcher and help your citizens as we do other municipalities throughout Western North Carolina.
Do you have any more? I was just gonna say, thank you for the things that you do in our communities. Incredibly impactful, the way you do your work with the state by the time our police department also does some work with state wide offices and stuff, I'd say that. I was going to mention the councilman that I have there, we're a blur every now and again in the newsletter about the things that they do. It seems like a lot of our residents probably use some of their services.
That was one of the questions I had, do we have a short write-up and link to our webpage to Physical Legal Services?
Mark, no, we can add one.
I think we definitely should. And it's not just a link, you need a little bit of a write-up to let people know the direction that you're trying to send them. The other question I had is, do you all get involved in mediator work between the clients and maybe whoever on the other side, the leasing or something?
Well, I'll answer that this way. Not in a formal capacity as a mediator, no, so we're usually representing one side, but often I think we find that we are mediated.
Right.
In a non-official capacity. And that's what we want to do because that's good.
Keep them out of the order of supply. Yes, thank you.
It is a good question. And for Mark, your benefit, we can help you frame that up so you don't have to imagine that. And get you away from something. Yeah, but, well, again, thank you, everyone in there.
All your programs, you had one section on their homeless prevention?
Yes.
Can you expand on that?
Yes, so what we're finding is that eviction rates are on the rise again very dramatically. And landlords are sometimes maybe quick to end leases without proper notification or to sort of, I don't want to say forcibly remove, but say, you know, it's time to go. There's a process to go through for that. And sometimes that process is short-circuited and folks are just thrown out. And then what happens is a cascading effect of problems. You've got kids now, your parents, if you've lost your home, first and foremost, but then it's a disruption to the whole routine. Kids missing school, this can affect maybe employment. And so the homelessness prevention program is primarily about keeping people in their homes so they don't become homeless. It's not so much about finding existing homeless folks and helping them out. This is about trying to maintain homes for people who are already in them and may be longfully removed. So that's your question.
Do you try to find the people that are maybe renting out the units to these people to give them some sort of pay so that they're not just like out something in that way? Nobody's gonna figure this person's not going out of business.
Right, yeah, and it's a very fair question. I would answer it this way. What I understand is that we're really trying to counsel landlords and property owners about how to do this to avoid trouble. Because if they rush and they make a misstep, that could backfire on them and they can be, you know, facing a bigger headache or a headache that stays with them much longer. They didn't mean anything by necessarily, they were just in a hurry and, you know, housing is so tight right now. So we try to help them understand what is the impact of that policy drafting and so on. We're always trying to educate folks about what their responsibilities are as well as their rights. We don't necessarily fund the landowner or the landlord or property owner so much. But again, we're trying to bring good reason to the situation where maybe we need a quick time out and just how is this really supposed to work? And that's where we get involved. And then I think both sides learn. Well, thank you again. As I said, we were fortunate to receive some public support throughout the region from municipalities and counties. And if you're ever so inclined or you're in a position to do something about that, or if you have grant programs, you know, we can certainly approach that in an appropriate way, which is, you know, the front door and you can just come in when and if something is available. Because I think we're helping folks in your community and we just want to be able to continue to do that.
I think so too. I thank you for the work that you want to give to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, preliminary design for tennis, tennis and basketball courts, with Mr. Kathy.
He's, uh, Mayor, yeah, Ben Kathy's not here. Nathan Sawyer from McGill Associates is here. And I'm just gonna give a little lead into this and then see if you have any questions. And then Mr. Sawyer can address that or provide any comments that I might have missed. So last week I mentioned that staff, our parks director, assistant town manager, myself, met initially with Ben Kathy from McGill Associates to just kind of get what would be the concept and the potential location to cover basketball, tennis courts. And we've got a component in here, pickleball courts, which is kind of a wave of facilities for this type of, you know, sport. So with that, they went back to staff McGill and I emailed you last week, and this was after the agenda review. And you got a hard copy, S E L eleven, I already have it so closely, the potential layout of these courts. So you can see the location is just north of the fitness pad at the rear of the park or that rear parking lot just right above it. And it's a set of tennis courts, two half basketball courts, and then three pickleball courts. And the reason for the half courts of the basketball, which is in the center, is it helps to kind of keep better open play. Sometimes when you do just one set of a full basketball court, you get groups that kind of take it over.
That was my question.
Yeah, and they get, and it's hard for just a couple of people that want to show up and shoot around. Also, a lot of pickup basketball games, you know, people do use a half court because it's just, you know, they're not ready to run up and down the court. So that was some of the thought process into the two half courts. And then, you know, after a lot of discussion, you can hear a lot of comments under public input, just kind of knowing where the sport's going. Pickleball courts was to, instead of two best, two tennis courts, one full set of tennis courts and then three pickleball courts where a full set of tennis courts would go. So, you know, we had a lot of discussion, put a lot of thought into it, but wanted to get, you know, your feedback on this and see, is this something you're comfortable with as far as the layout? Or do you want to make tweaks to it before, you know, we come back to you, McGill, Nathan and others and staff and McGill come back with a full-blown set of designs that then has to get bid. And then the other thing, in addition to the layout of courts, you also got a copy of the, excuse me, updated cost estimate to build what's presented to you here. And you can see that's that, this is with design fees, of course, an SD bid at 300, just over $327,000 to do that. So that's some thoughts. I don't know, Nathan, if there's anything I overlooked in that discussion.
Okay. Is the material of the courts, is the best possible material for, I guess, long-term maintenance of it?
Asphalt works well. I don't know if Greg, do you want to comment about any other type of surface going?
Thank you. And this is out of use we have for the large style, which is a resolute covering, gives a little bit more durability when you're doing straight asphalt. It's more water resistant, it does better heat resistant. You can get into multi-coloring if you're trying to do a variety of courts with the pickleball, basketball and tennis. So that would be Parks and Recreation's recommendation is to spend money on the front end. Asphalt courts have about a 10-year shelf life to sunshine. We get a lot of sunshine in Moore Street. I ran courts for 25 years for county recreation and for, it was counted by M C A. And the courts that are covered, discounted much longer lifespan.
How's the storm right now?
That would be in the design issue, you'd have to look and see where your elevation points are. We've got irrigation on that point in the park. McGill did a great job a few years back, putting in some irrigation pieces that took care of standing water. So I think as we work through this, obviously that would be a key component we want to put in to make sure that the water is going to drainage points and not creating other puddles coming off the course.
And they've reviewed that, he's, they've done some preliminary analysis of that site as it impacts.
I think that is what I was trying to get you to find, even I know we've had some.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, that's an excellent question.
And we've just had thousands of dollars of damage done before and then they improved a lot of the drainage force, so I think it is much, but that's going to have a better service treatment.
And it may necessitate, let's say you wind up building this here just like it's proposed, it may necessitate, you know, you may see a year or two down the road, there might have to be some additional drainage work done near it just so it doesn't exacerbate an existing problem. Like it's working good in this area. There is a little bit of a ponding, like after we get heavy rains on that park area that's in front of the fitness pad, mostly the patio parking. Sometimes you get some standing water in there, so, because, I mean, it will add more effervious surface. But, you know, we want to make sure you're comfortable, we've got funding, you've got it appropriated, it won't be enough to cover this, but we've already had that discussion back, even at the budget retreat, that the balance would be made up depending if you're comfortable with the, you know, lowest responsible bidder, what that price is to cover it from unassumed fund balance, which is very healthy right now.
I would like to see, it looks like maybe there is, but the only question for McGill, was there a room for extension? Like if you decide to add another pickleball or mainly another tennis court, about one tennis court, that might be sufficient. But if you wanted to add another down the road, can you do that to the left side? Did you anticipate any problem with that?
The left side might be a little tricky because there is some drainage spales there. And it might be opportunities on the right side to work towards the east or some power lines and stuff that we have to contend with if we go too far. But there should, there should be a little bit of room there for you to, you know, if you need to adjust its location some to anticipate a future court, we can definitely look at that.
Also, the basketball court, I heard what was being said, how I'm concerned that someone would hog the whole court. But I know those river has a full court and I've seen a lot of gyms with full courts. And that forward's like six goals to where technically you can have like four groups playing, you know, two and two. Or, you know, if you don't have the two teams, you could do the full size. You know, to me, this looks a little bit urbanish or like in inner city or something to have two half courts. So I personally would prefer to have the full court and be done with it than to feel like we shortchanged and need to add more half courts later. I'd like to see a full court with like six goals, like two on each side and one on either end, like a traditional basketball court. I know that that would have you shifted to the rocks and make it happen, yes, or maybe.
It might be able to just turn it so that they're, instead of that two half, one on each end.
Tell you the truth, I liked it the way it is because, I mean, historically, when we used to, the town used to have a basketball goal over at the elementary school that we built, there was always issues of the older kids dominating the basketball courts away from the younger kids. And by having two side by side here, it forces, forces them to split up.
And there's a fence, well, at least as you can propose in the plan, there's a fence between them. So they are segregated so that even that one, that one group can, you know, merge over and take both houses, they're kind of separating the fence.
Yeah, I see all that. I'm just working in middle school, I know what that looks like. So it's very shorter court to bring.
Well, it's a thirty-foot arc, which is the traditional three-point line NBA level. So you'd have twenty players per hour that can play duly simultaneously on a half-court situation. Traditional half-court court, if you run full court, it's ten players per hour. So we're looking at it from a volume standpoint, how many people are at the park, trying to get people to turn over. Half-court game is going to be much quicker than traditionally the full-court games.
Is there a way that we could turn the courts facing each other, leave them the fence, so that later in life, if you decide to go full court? Or you gotta just take the fence out and fill the whole court?
You can hang baskets on the end of each fence line, just wouldn't have, you know, it gets a little complicated when you start putting in multiple foul lines, multiple arcs, things like that. So the solution might be you put two end baskets so that you have capable of getting a full court, put in a full court line and a free throw court. But then you've got the fence piece that you're taking away that separates the dual courts.
It's hard to look at this diagram, but it looks like the, the basketball court is actually wider than is long, is that?
Probably with, during the width of the half-court scenario, so traditionally you're looking at a ninety-four, fifty, you were taking, that's probably about a forty-eight foot if you got it from the kids.
Another question I have is, is the, hard to tell from the diagram, is the three pickleball courts and the tennis court, are those the same size?
There's probably a little more width when you go to the pickleball end, because you're putting three courts in. If you overlay those on the traditional tennis court, you have some width issues, I think.
I mean, the thing I'm thinking of is, let, let's say, they keep, things keep going with pickleball and go crazy, and tennis starts going downhill, we see people aren't using these fairer office, could we convert the pickleball, or should we make it a little bit wider in the first place?
You could probably, in this, like, you can speak, you can get at least two courts, pickleball courts on a normal tennis court.
Okay. That's correct. So, but you could make the argument to make both sides the same width, and you may decide to put temporary lines on the tennis court or pickleball, or maybe just bring three temporary courts, but yeah, that, that is correct. It's chairman to pickleball courts for regular tennis courts.
Hey, you can put, you can paint them so you can do both.
I think that's a good idea.
I almost agree with Keith right there, spinning on the basketball course around. I see what Ms. Franklin's trying to do, get more banking for your bucket, you can wipe that, put more gold around there. Yes, if I have an opportunity, or something, I want to play the full court, but if, if you get the little kids to measure everything, sideways course, so I can go get all those gyms and stuff, it has multiple gyms or multiple goals that are around, I can get the most bang for the buck. And I can understand trying not to keep the bigger posts.
How much more space would we need to?
I mean, with the width wise, that's probably what you're talking about, to be able to accommodate multiple courts side to side. The length's gonna be the same length, you're not gonna adjust that, you're just gonna have to push out, we would have come down from the thirty-foot arc, probably a twenty-three foot on each court. If you're gonna put a three-point line, your free throw line's gonna be a fifteen-foot.
Change all the arms for...
Yeah, if you turn those two, you have to make the court wider.
And if we could make it wider and leave room for a possible another tennis court on the side, I think that would sound pretty good.
How long the basketball courts have a yard? The only other question I have is, once we get these things built, ready, how will we manage priorities?
Well, I think you have to do, look at it from a program standpoint, what programs can you offer that people sign up for and participate in? Do you do three-on-three league, do you use programs, do you run summer camps? Then you can have traditional open drop in place, so you can have a schedule that's put all the fans on your right side, on your bridge, so you can follow those and you have a follow count. But, you know, a lot of our firsts from seven a.m. to nine p.m., we're only, realistically two p.m. to four p.m. is most of the time when we get, have anything in the gym, we put daycare kids in there, they're inside.
So let me ask you again, how long does a pickleball game last?
A pickleball game, it lasts maybe fifteen minutes, paint on the, and they have a system, like an honor system where the early day players are around, the good people that that they, have self-therapy. Something along, which we were bringing earlier, Parks Recreation have a scheduled for the activity center, and it's dominated by pickleball, and then there's like an open gym, and then they have like half courts for volleyball, it's multipurpose, and some else you can be ready to use for volleyball with. But they had a set schedule, and so they figured out what, where to put your camps in, and what not, and where they have to shut down, sometimes they have to shut down four per week because of venues that you schedule ahead of time. So that was essentially that schedule, just a thousand ideas, so you could put in the program and see what works and what does not, like three and three basketball days and such. But we got basically games like fifteen, twenty minutes a game. And when, when the, when the pickleball runs, they basically have an honor system where the early day players are around to do a tournament. I get to talk to like Larry Appleby, who's like one of the guys in the group, who'd tell you how they were more of a tournament, if that's what you want to do a tournament there. But I'm certainly fifteen, twenty minutes. And four people, quite a hell of a lot, always played up, almost always.
I guess the only concern I have after hearing it, but talk is that we probably should consider leaving space open for another set of your tennis courts or pickleball courts on, on one end, so we do have some, some area to grow.
Can you shift it more on the left side to leave more open on the right? And how far can you come down on the left side of the tennis courts?
We've got the same ground and slope on that side.
Okay. So it's probably opposed right where it is?
I think it's more the drainage issues coming over that, like, to the left.
I would say, I could move it thirty feet or so, that's a lot.
Well, that's a lot. We'll take it.
About time we get this done.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just happy to get anything, I really am, it's been a long time, but I wanted to do it. I just, I just don't, I want to do it correct, I just want to get it the way it should be, and so that we don't put like the basketball courts in and just say, you know, how big it's, why do they do this for? So I don't know what to tell you on that, but I'm happy to have any course at all. And I appreciate the thoughts on the half court. I think the chain link between the two, that, well, that's wonderful, but you, you know, kids are gonna learn how to, kids and adults, they have to learn how to play nice anyway, so I've seen many courts where it was full court in six weeks, and it was awesome, because so many people got to play at the same time.
The problem, if you go full court, the people can't play on the side, because you got a game going.
Yeah, I've heard that part, that if you have a full game going, you know, like that...
So it's just something that's like...
Yeah.
Do you, so I, I guess, unless there's...
Well, I want to jump back, I want to jump back to a couple of questions, if we can. You said that the asphalt had a ten-year shelf life, what's the other surface?
Usually fifteen to twenty, depending on the type. There's three different levels of coating that you can go to. So the more expensive is gonna get you a twenty-year sort of piece. We've got, luckily, in the last few years, winter hasn't been as harsh, we haven't had as much freezing, which would impact the courts. The bigger impact, I'm concerned, is we have a thousand percent sunshine at our park on the end of the day. So that's really hard on asphalt, because it's a combination of fresh sunlight and the rainfall.
But we'll have the coating on there.
The coating...
The asphalt's the base, so then we'll have a coating.
As long as you've got something on top of that, then you get the long period of coating.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you've got it. The asphalt surface course is at the thirty-nine thousand, and then the, where's the coat? Surface treatment is, is seventy-one thousand, so...
It might be worth a while to see the, the cost difference between the two materials, or two surfaces.
Yeah, we can get more detail on what that is.
You know, City of Hearsomeville is doing some courts right in the asphalt recreation out of them to get current costs.
The, the surface treatment, Greg, we've got in the estimate from McGill, what, what kind of surface treatment is that? Do you know what that is?
We talked about the orange stuff, I'm not sure, like, the price point, if that's bad, that's what they had to talk about, there's something similar to that.
That's what we're looking at. Is it, what's that?
It is, it's similar to what Greg's talking about.
And it's like, it's spongy, like if a kid was to fall, we're not gonna start to leave you, they have more of a...
They have more bleed.
No, I mean, I'm not sure, because some of that stuff is a different surface when you fall, it's not nearly as bad as falling on...
Yeah, that's the composition for it, so you're getting a lot more money.
Yeah, that's not, that's not...
Okay, that's not what this is, okay.
Yeah, so this is similar to if you go to Patton Park, you go to Hensmills Tennis Courts, look at those type of systems, give you a feel for what it's like.
Yeah, cool.
Any more questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, I mean, we can come back with a revised set, but just trying to get some consensus, so McGill knows what to come back with designs on this. I think you're all were fine with the set of the pickleball courts and the tennis court. Maybe the only change on the tennis court is have it designed so it's, I guess, painted. I think you can, you can have the tennis court and also have it painted for pickleball, so that it can play pickleball or tennis on the tennis court. So let's see if we can design it with that, or it's...
I think that one may be a little confusing for anybody, I mean, I'm not for certain, but I know I had an opportunity to talk to Nicole Swett from Most River, and she was telling me that she, you know, said, well, what do you think about hybrid courts? Because that's always been the thing that I thought would work. And she said, if you can get separate courts, why don't you need to get separate courts? Because there's always a conflict about who's doing tennis and who's doing pickleball.
Yeah, there's definitely some confusion issues, and then there's common, when you, when you converting it. So, so maybe keep the tennis court just a tennis court, this initial presence. Okay. And then they'll see if we can shift it over to the west or left a little bit, so that it can give room for expansion if there was another court added on the east side. And then, or, or if there's enough room on the west side to do it over there, on that side, if there's a future court added. And then the, kind of the remaining thing is the basketball design or layout. Do, stay with the two half courts? And you could do another basketball board on the line that separates them going to the left, to the, to the west, and have, you know, so you have four. Or do you want to do the full court and then have the half designed in there, or, excuse me, full court, and then, so you have a goal at each end, and then one midway, so there's six basketball courts.
I'm comfortable with how it is with two half courts. I think when we get, we're starting to add in more, more goals and extend it out a little bit here. And if you play basketball, and we're gonna shorten out the line, it gets a lot more a little bit confusing. So that's why I'd like to see it, to stay for the two half courts.
Like I was saying, the gyms around here, they've got where it has the six, and you can run like, if you're two full courts on one machine, but the ones on the sides right there, you can run a full court this way. It's almost like if you did something like that, kind of expand it, because once you build this, then you can't grow the work, you need to grow.
So you can make holes on the back end of the half courts to have a mid, medium, half court to do a cross court. These courts are gonna be outdoors, they're gonna be seventy-five to eighty-five degrees most of the year, where they're being played. People aren't gonna play a full court basketball on a ninety-four court court, outdoors, very long. On a shorter court, fifty foot, that has dual goals, you can do that, and you would have length of play. But just in my experience of running outdoor courts in the summer, not many people play full court.
Oh, I was just looking at the convenience of having those six goals.
Right.
Kids just want to go with the...
Yeah, you can add in, add in multiple, so that basically you've created six half courts.
Greg, and that's what I look at, instead of having just two goals, if, if Mr. Justice brings his name up there, and there's just, there's two people shooting on multiple things, he has to go home, and it's got six, we can do different things.
Yeah, I would just want, I mean, Jackson Park's goals at every surface, there are only four holes for a reason, and they, 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 full court, we do, but it's not even any close, you need high school full court, it goes to the sixty foot. You could do, you could have four holes and two short courts, but it would not be wise to do it to six, like you do at activities and as a gym, because outside would simply not be a demand for full court, regulation full court. If you feed a three-on-three on two courts that you're finding right now, if you're able to do four marches, that makes you too confusing, so just logistics of what you can physically do. But you're not gonna play outdoor, full side, full court, very well, unless you're a giant shit or any, any of that, which you're not doing here.
First time, I think the big thing with council is, we want to get as many goals as possible, where kids can play versus two. If you do four, then maybe it's out, right there.
Yeah, so maybe it could be...
I'd like to see the term to do the four, where you put on the back wall, and again, a little space, instead of a face.
So how do you mark that?
Well, they just put the ones over the back.
Yeah, those would just be obvious, just shooting one-on-one, somebody had an altar shooting around the...
If you're playing, you're acting, maybe, towards the half court side.
But you could do widen somewhat, right?
Probably ten foot.
Okay. I see that.
So if we widen it, and then there's four half courts, is that what it's called?
Two half courts or four goals. Still have the fence to buy, and you just say the marking if you're...
Or if you can, if you can do the four half courts, that'd be great.
But you could reduce, the twenty-three foot line, you can cut your three-point line, we've got a set, I think, on thirty on this, right, Nathan?
Thirty.
So we can bring that down to twenty-three feet, that's picking up seven foot, that you can move on either side. You can bring that in tighter, you can make it a twenty foot, but you've got your free throw line. The three-point doesn't have to match up with anything specific, NCAA or high school, we're not running those type events, three-on-three, everybody shooting from the same distance, as long as you agree what that distance is.
What I appreciate is the six, but I'd love to see, take a look at, you know, take a look at what Jackson Park has, if they have the four dominating.
That's what I have to do. Well, I was reading Jackson Park's outdoor courts, eight, six, but the six is regulation, like high school, because it was originally a Christian school, so it had the high school regulation, that's not necessary for an outdoor. Jackson Park, I'm just as a model, Patton Park, I think only has four goals, you know, it's a little bit longer, it's a lot wider. I don't think they have enough room, but that would be along the lines, what I'm suggesting.
You said Patton has the four?
Patton has four.
There are two inside on the side.
Yeah. And you can have like, there's two mark, you know, the three-point lines, and then the other two, just like a father or daughter, or little kids, obviously a ten-year old shooting three, three, three points.
It's no test to your design, we're just trying to figure out, it's like Trevor said, once it's there, it's there. And we would love to maximize that as much as we could, where you can see, you know, multiple groups of play, instead of just two groups hogging two half courts.
We can come back with a couple different options, then it gets four basketball boards, which just achieves the goal of more places people can shoot. And, you know, then if someone's got a real game going on these half courts, then, you know, there's less shooting on either end or line. We'll come back with a couple.
I do very long...
We could do that for September meeting, and if you're comfortable with that, we'll go to have McGill work on a full-blown design, so that we can get the bidding process going. So, we're planning for that.
Any more from council on that?
Appreciate all the work you guys done, gets to this point.
Any more from council on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, the extension of the purchase and sell agreement. The town's on the project, Mr. Manager.
Okay. And I spoke to you last week about basically where we're at with this. We didn't have anybody here from the developer team, kind of representing them, but, you know, essentially, they, you know, we met with DOT, the town staff, the developer representatives in DOT, to discuss some kind of short-term and long-term on transportation. and DOT to discuss some kind of short-term and long-term on the transportation improvements, but at this point, the traffic impact analysis the developer had to do, had to get in before DOT was going to take a position on any initial approval driveway permits, or relinquishing some of that residual right away in the area that the developer's going to buy, which then impacts those other transportation improvements we discussed. So, right now it's gone to the Raleigh Congestion Management Group. I contacted DOT last week and they, at that point, they hadn't received it, or I wasn't able to get ahold of the district engineer, he was out, he was out this week, but they are anticipating getting that. They set up a meeting, then wants to have congestion management's feedback on the traffic impact analysis, and then it's a sit-down with, with DOT to talk about how much financial contribution the developers are going to have to put into it. And, and I know Bob, you had asked last week about having DOT here, I, I couldn't get a hold of the district engineer last week, but I'll mention that to Lonnie Watkins, that we could have them at some point soon here, talk to you all about, you know, all those bigger picture improvements that are aside from what is going to be required by the TIA by the developer, because then it impacts the whole project here and just transfer, you know, traffic flow for this part of town. So that's kind of where we're at, the, you know, it expires the end of this month on that last extension, and on the advice of our attorney, they just recommended another short-term extension, and then hopefully we'd get some better correction after that meeting with DOT, that they could either develop or go to a closing, a little needful time. So you've got an extension to go to the end of September thirtieth at this point for action.
Is that going to be another extension program? Seems like a real quick.
It, it is, I mean, I, you know, when I was talking to Will Bowie, the engineer rep for the developer team, they were shooting, suggesting maybe the end of January. And when I talked to our attorney who's worked and working on the agreements, they advise a shorter period rather than just go out, have much time. And to be very specific, what are the reasons for it? Basically saying all the other two diligence is done except for this, and I've given, you know, other reasons to extend it longer than maybe we're comfortable or maybe need. So that, that's, that's why just the, through September thirtieth.
So September thirtieth means we have to bring it back up, I guess, September three to live again?
Well, or, or they indicate they're close enough to go schedule the closing. I, I'm anticipating, yeah, it'll probably be another extension, but hopefully a lot of the clearer direction at that point, how much time they really need to make a decision to get to a closing at that point.
Any other questions, comments? Are we comfortable with this?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the extension of a purchase and sell agreement for Town Center? Should I have a minute? We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of your favorites say aye.
Aye.
Close the post, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number seven, the update on the family conference, Mr. Parsons, our director.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. September twenty-fourth is our date for this year's Fletcher Family Festival, where we anticipate having a bunch of people, ten men and women, as long as the weather man is good for us that day. We've got five food vendors set up with a variety of food coming in, chicken food, barbecue, sandwich truck. That was Ice Cream will have their site set up, so we will have the food truck area set up in the alley, grass alley next to field five. Music and entertainment this year is jig jam, which is the Irish bluegrass group, they're one of the top international bluegrass groups around. They'll be set up behind field four, with our concerts will set. We've got a dozen, as of today, a dozen vendors coming to sell a variety of different jewelry, cake bakes, essential oils, flowers craft, candles, K-pop art, kids' things, handcrafted blankets. We've got to do as much improvement we can to have those types. We're hoping to hit to around fifteen, which is where we have to face more. That's going to be set up on field five this year, so we look at the footprint back to that end of the park, to kind of tighten that scale a little bit, make it a more cozy community for people. So children's activities, we've got face mending set up, North River Elementary is sign-on, is our sponsor, it'll be on-site and an activity for children. We'll have three different playrooms set up for kids to play and enjoy on field number two on that area. And then we anticipate being able to offer touch and track a game this year with the fire department, police department, parks and major public courts, bringing some large vehicles and tractors and things like that for kids to step out and play in touch throughout the afternoon. So the event starts at five P.M., the concert starts at six P.M. And our sponsor for entertainment this year is our new neighbors Reinhardt Racing. So we're real excited to be partnering with them on this event. So looking forward to, you know, this event started, if you'll remember historically, with the twenty-fifth anniversary a few years back, with the family festival, and it was a very successful event, so we are at to continue the event and we may have to do so.
Anything for council?
Sounds good.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Fred.
And your comments, Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Not much change from last week, I mentioned, we're on the in custody death that happened several months ago, unfortunately, or tragically. We don't have any updates yet from SDI as far as the investigation being complete. The officers involved in that have concerned the duty. And I've got the chief here, if there's any questions on that. And if not, the next thing I was going to talk about is the extension of sewer service with MSD, and we were looking at possibility of ARP funds, have been in communication with the staff from MSD, Kevin Johnson, and then also their engineer there. I've got a conference call tomorrow with Kevin Johnson to talk more about the logistics. And again, initially, we're looking for, at a project area, and this is an area that has some subject issues and just a lack of service there, is Westfield Road, North Hudson Lane, and Dogwood Terrace, and they're all right in close clock, excuse me, close proximity to each other, right off of Annie Ridge Road. And they've given us, you know, a very initial ballpark cost on that, but I really want to get into a discussion on logistics, is this practical to do in that area as far as, you know, cap fees, resident interest, all these things that happen, how many people have to be willing to sign on to the service for MSD to be willing to do that expansion? So, working on that. And then the last thing, I don't know if there's been any other feedback since the letter that was sent to the commissioners regarding the library project, I don't know anyone's heard of it, or anything, or nothing from anyone else. Again, this is, trying to get, as you said, conversation going with their one million state funds that are not attached to anything. And, the only other thing, and I really, you know, just getting into this, is I'm, I'm trying to get some research together and then work on a report and conversation with you about, we're going to do some type of survey tool out for residents. I know Commissioner Lance, or Councilman Lance had talked about some type of public engagement survey, so working on what some other localities have done and different collection tools, and there's, there's a lot that goes into that, but then also what information we want to be asking, would be the most important, what we're trying to achieve. So do us some research on that, I'll get back with you, hopefully within the next month about that, so.
I'm not sure how far we've gotten to the research, but what exactly have you seen of municipalities, you know, what are the, what are the questions they look like, are they asking exactly? That's interesting here.
It could be all, it could be all over the place, it could be very general questions, satisfaction level with services, it could be asking for feedback, like what, what do you like, don't like, what would you like to see if you went into an area or change in service, a particular service. It could be just particular to an issue or problem that you're having with water rate, I know we don't have utility here, but with water rates and services, things like that. So, and there's basically three different tools that you can use, I, I, just basically what I've found out so far, you probably want to look at a written survey that's mailed, but also online as well, giving, you know, resident proper, you know, an opportunity to respond electronically and, and writing or, you know, written copy of it. You can do that, the written survey, or mailed survey, that's pretty online as well, the telephone one, where you're calling people to survey, or in-person interview survey, nothing. The last two are pretty costly. The written survey, if you do it right, you have to spend some money on that as well, but, so, that's what I'm finding out at this point, but I want to get around to some other kind of successes, best practice type of thing, and raise some information back to you. And then, and then you, and then you also may have to get into what's the content, what, you know, the question, and I could help, you know, staff could help with formulating that, but I don't know the lead in, you know, you know, I want to make sure, whatever it is you want to get out of this, that you're knowing that on the front end rather than at the back end.
Yeah, the staff are able to, it seems like a lot of, a lot, a lot of work, the staff are able to handle this, or is this going to be third party?
I'm thinking third party, just to give you a heads up, because it is a lot, it's just that, we don't, we don't do surveys all the time, and there's, you get into some sort of, you know, organized or sophisticated methodology and doing it.
If you decide to work on it and ask, I don't mind working on that at all. I think that you could state services that are in other municipalities, so that they have some base information, and then ask them about our sort of outer services. And then I think you can also be informative on current plans who have been forward, which one of these do they think that they, you know, they can write, which ones are more important to them, or do they just make use of those? Because a lot of people, and you can even include CIP plans, a lot of residents don't know what those are. You can also have a spot for concerns, questions, concerns in regards to services or making a resident in your town. Also, it seems like they always think we can do something about the roads, and even though we do have contacts with DOT, we're very limited as to what we can do, but I would want residents to know that we are concerned about infrastructure, and that is on our radar. We're trying, I guess, about, you know, the process to where it gives us some relief. And when we get an opportunity to talk to DOT, that's the one thing I want to stress to DOT is, because we, they need relief. I don't think that's going to go away after twenty-six is finished. I think we need to add our infrastructure instead of take away or make it harder. But those are just some ideas, that, services, and preliminary plans, CIP plans, and concerns.
So hold those thoughts, I mean, I know a lot of the.
Certain.
But, yeah, this is a conversation I want to have with you on the front end, and then if we, you know, we get, whichever, recommend, we get assistance and, and policies deployed, and how the, it's written and, you know, put into a format, just so, we just have that very professionally done. And, you know, the hope is that we get good thoughts, right, do everything we can to get.
You can, you know, like chronically, that I'm happy to have, you know, all of that wonderful stuff, but I really feel like there's probably a need to have that written, you know, snail well as well.
And you can, the same, I don't know, we can send out access to all the residents, if you say that, one of these to make a return access.
Well, that one is great.
It's gone.
It's already gone.
No, 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 just leaving this part.
It's not ours.
And this could be on this one time, so you can be, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Be, be questions, problems, or.
And, and you can do follow-ups, and, you know, you'll learn from this, and you can refine things, and you do it in increments and.
I don't think it's a great idea.
There's been a bunch of cities in North Carolina that have, that have improvements.
And we can ask specific questions and so on, but I think at least every couple years, you should poll the residents, what do you like about Fletcher, what do you not like about Fletcher, what do you want to see changed?
I think you have it as an option, as to whether they want to put their name on it or not.
Right.
You know, some people would want to share some thoughts or concerns, but they couldn't care less about who they are, they just want you to know this or this.
Yeah, one of the benefits of the survey that's turned in, and obviously there's ways we can track it if we put a code or number on there, but it is some anonymity on that too, you know.
Yeah. If it's maybe too specific, you know, then you need to know that, but.
Yeah. And if you can put a traffic word, it's actually Fletcher residents, and if you post them on Facebook, and ask people.
Yeah, they're careful, yeah.
Yeah, because people from everywhere, actual farm, they're looking here.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Wine still.
Depending on how it's deployed, it may not be foolproof to prevent that, but I would strongly recommend you set it up so that you're capturing Fletcher, yeah, precisely if you can, residents of Fletcher.
And, and I'm not sure, sure it's important to try to give them an option to send it in, obviously, you may have to ask them for people to skew their results.
I see what you're saying.
Say that.
Wouldn't it be good to have a survey, a survey link on your Facebook page, you know, because a lot of people will do that in a heartbeat before they'll bother to respond to their email or their, you know, survey sent in.
You just have to get them to, that's on that, residents, non-residents, I think that you.
Well, I just want to be sure to sit down when we do, we want to do it in a scientific way, where it's incredible, but the survey, I think it sounds easier to do, it's tough work, particularly data collection, so I want to make sure we're doing that effectively the right way. Councilor Day.
Yeah, nobody drives to find out, but first of all, I'd like to commend the police chief. Your report this, this month, I think, was the most interesting one I've seen since I've been on the council, so I enjoy when you do a little bit of write-up explaining what the officers do, I think that's important for us, to get a good feel for how things are going, so keep that.
I would, yes.
The other thing was, there was, I saw an email about partnership, economic development, something coming up sometime soon over.
Yeah, well, there's a couple things, there's their annual event, this will be at Reinhardt.
Oh, exactly, it was the annual.
Yeah, and that's in September.
I think it's the fifteenth.
Yeah, I think that sounds right, I think it's a Thursday night. I can forge it, that to you again.
It is.
It is?
It is.
You got that? Okay, thanks.
I think it's at five o'clock at Reinhardt Racing.
Yeah. Yep. And then they, they had another event, their not public, the investors update.
They have the investors this Thursday.
This Thursday, yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
And thanks for commenting on the chief's report, I do think it's, yeah, it's really good content in there, what's going on with the police department.
Any other business for council? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I don't think.
You have a motion for adjournment, you have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, there's any discussion? All of the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Close the post, you're welcome.